Yesterday, they were saying that because of the election next year. They shouldn't be buying or doing anything this year.
It'll be cleaned up the next one.
Next year because it's an election year.
It's funny.
Okay, I have nine o'clock. I will convene the meeting. And Betty, if you would. Read the minutes of the September eighteenth meeting.
Do you want to do the agenda first?
Oh, yeah, sorry. You have the agenda before you. Is there any? Uh, changes if there are none?
I'd like to add on the, I've had talk with Kevin. First in on the agribusiness park.
Okay, can we do that in new business?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be the ag business park lease.
Yes. I don't know, I can motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and second to approve the agenda with one additional item of the ag business, uh, discussion of ag business. Part. Farm lease. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Uh, now Betty, if you please read the September eighteen minutes.
On September eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Chairman's please call the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmus and Helgaboll. Motion by Rasmus and second by Helgaboll to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Motion by, uh, minutes of the previous regular meeting of September eleven, twenty twenty-three were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. In open forum, Sandy McGrath, Wright County Public Health Administrator, gave an update on the COVID vaccinations. On September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, all previous COVID vaccines were pulled and disposed of. In the next coming weeks, the new COVID vaccine will be available at public health. Mc McGrath also advising individuals to get their flu shots and anyone over the age of sixty-five get the RSV vaccinations. Tony Nicholas, Wright County Assessor, also spoke in open forum. There will be a property appraiser from the Iowa Department of Revenue in the county this week looking at dozen. Looking at a dozen commercial properties. Her name is Lisa Schumacher and will be in a state car. Uh, number two oh six seven. Every two years, the Department of Revenue will send an appraiser to the counties that do not see enough at commercial sales. Held a canvas of votes for the continuing of the EMS tax levy for fifteen years. The special election was held on Tuesday, September twelve, twenty twenty-three. There were six hundred twenty-nine votes. Uh, yes, votes and fifty-five no votes. The public measure passes with ninety-two percent and will continue for an additional fifteen years. Motion by Rasmus and second by Helgaboll to approve the canvas of votes for the special EMS tax levy election. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmus and second by Helgaboll to approve crisis intervention services to use the courthouse parking lot on October twenty-eighth from nine thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. For trunk or treat on Halloween activity. Motion carries. Uh, Cluse had a conversation with the Conservation Director about the agribusiness park drainage ditch. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmus, Rasmusson to not employ Joey Hera to spray the agribusiness park drainage ditch and have conservation spray and clean up the agribusiness park. Agribusiness park. Motion carries. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads. There were thirty-seven work orders completed last week with twenty-nine being entrance closeouts from the applicants. Year three scheduled gravel was completed last week. Bridge number fifty-three on R fifty-nine South of Doll will be getting formed and for the. Uh, and for paving this week. Bridge number one thirty-seven on one hundred ninetieth street between Ida Avenue and Hancock Avenue has been taken down and hauled new rock as crews put together the pipe. Crews completed the night drive last week to evaluate the road signs in the county. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmusson to go into closed session at nine twenty-three AM pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five one J. To discuss the purchase or sale of a particular real estate only where the premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would. Receive for the property by roll call vote, ayes, clues, Rasmusson and Helgaboll nays, none. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmusson, second by Helgaboll to move out of closed session at ten twenty-five AM. Motion carries. There was no action taken concerning closed session. Rasmusson spoke on the agribusiness lease. Cluse will talk with the county attorney attorney on the legal requirements and update the board next week. Motion by Rasmusson, second by Helgaboll to during the meeting. Motion carries.
Are there any additions or per? Hearing none, they'll stand approved. Claims have been around. Uh. Open forum for Republican vote. Item number six, review and act on resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. Directing the filing and certification debt for the agribusiness urban renewal area.
We, did the claims go around?
Yep, they did go around. They're all right.
Amanda's not here today.
Nope. No, not here. Deb's not here. I'm here.
Well, I have lost my. Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. Uh, I have twenty-three does thirty-five.
Will you make a copy for me?
I found it. I found it. Never mind. Thank you. Okay, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, resolution directing the filing. Of certification under Iowa Code Section four oh three point one nine. Betty, I could butcher this, but I'm going to let you, uh. Explain what this resolution is.
So, um. For our TIF debt, for for our TIF, we have to keep track of how much debt you have against your TIF district and that urban renewal area. And this resolution is, um, for the Prestige Urban Agribusiness Park Prestige Urban Renewal Area. And. The. Additions that have not been certified last year or the previous years. Uh, the addition is going to be the Prestige Tax Rebate of five hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars.
Okay.
And, um, and then I do keep all the previous debt that was certified in the resolution so you can kind of see all the way through the process. Uh, where the first fiscal year was two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Right.
Is when we first certified our first debt.
And, and, uh. So, under twenty-one, twenty-two. Of projects for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh. Item number two and number three has got parentheses around it. I'm assuming that is outstanding debt still. And the other ones without those are paid off.
So, though, this, um. The SRF, State Revolving Fund. We went from a twenty-year program. And reduced it to ten years.
Okay.
And so the parentheses are showing a savings. By doing, by by shortening the years, it saved us, uh, darn near two hundred thousand dollars.
And so that's why we had to report it because it was a significant, okay.
Because I, because at, um, during the. Yeah, during, um, the twenty thousand seventeen eighteen. I did the four million dollars for the project.
Uh huh.
Um, number one, under seventeen eighteen.
Yep.
And then, um. And then in eighteen nineteen, did the balance of the loan and then the schedule per the schedule of the interest payments. So that'd be eighteen nineteen, number one and two.
Okay.
So then when we refinanced it, it reduced. The interest and the principal.
Got it. Okay.
But again. That. That is informational for us. The important thing, the reason for the resolution is because of the, uh.
Addition.
The twenty-two, twenty-three addition of the Prestige Tax Rebate.
Yeah, based on this, the full-time ability is not contracted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions concerning resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four? Hearing none, I would accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, resolution directing the filing of certification. Under Iowa Code Section four oh three point one nine by roll call.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi.
Dean. Aye. Motion carries. Good. Item number seven, review and act on resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five directing the filing. Thirty percent of debt in the re-nutrients urban, uh, renewal area.
So this is the same, similar as to the Prestige, um, annually. Uh, we, this is an internal loan with the county treasurer that the county has. Um, the additions to the twenty-two, twenty-three on that is going to be the interest paid on the loan of fifteen thousand two hundred. But then also they made their payment on the road project of fifteen thousand they make, um, every year. And then, um, there is a three-year. Uh, property tax rebate. And that was thirty-five thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. So.
And is, this is the third year on that rebate?
This is the second year, second year.
Alright. Any questions concerning resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five?
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to approve, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, resolution directing the filing of certification under Iowa. Code Section four oh three point one nine, all or by roll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Dean. Aye. Motion carried. Well. Item number eight. Review and act on resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six, authorizing the adoption of policies and procedures regarding municipal securities disclosure. Um. This resolution came with a cover sheet for us. Uh. This was, document was prepared by, uh. Of course.
Nancy Whitney.
Dorothy Whitney. Um. And again, these are, uh. SEC requirements. Um, of disclosures. Um. And SEC rules that we have to follow. Betty, anything to add to that?
When I had my own, uh, conversation, phone conference call with them. On Tuesday. Um. They were happy to hear that. I, I do contract with, um. Um, Suzanne Gerlach with PFM. To do our Emma reporting and that is all of our disclosure reporting. Um. And so. They were very comfortable with. With this document.
Okay.
Um, because I do. It's, uh, two thousand dollars a year. I think we just paid it in claims last week or two weeks ago. Um, for have them to do all of our, the reporting for this disclosure.
And that Emma thing is a electronic notification to you saying you gotta do this by this date, right?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a, let's. Municipal something, Emma, uh, would you do this? Oh, there I might have it. I have a. A lot of paperwork today.
It refers to it in the, in this overview letter.
Yeah, so PFM Financial Advisors are registered municipal advisors with the Security and Exchange Commission, which is your SEC. And the Municipal Securities Ruling, Rule Making Board, MSR B. And, um. This is just a disclosure conflict of the interest with, with PFM that they have to, there's no, nothing we have to act on. We just have to keep it on file. So I was planning on keeping it on file with all of this. And I was going to see if it said what Emma stood for. I'm gonna look it up and give it, send a new mail on it.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have it on my second.
All right, any further? Questions concerning?
Electronic municipal market access.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six and. Resolution authorizing the adoption of amended and related policies and procedures regarding municipal security disclosure. Uh, by roll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Dean. Aye. Motion carried. You got one of those for me to sign, Betty?
Yeah.
I'll have to just kind of flip through that one and look.
There's no spot there.
Please, thank you.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Item number nine, review and take action on the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three.
So this is another, uh, report that we have to do online. And this one shows, um. Everything that we. Have in our urban renewal area. So this would be your wind, wind farms. Your, um, re-nutrients. And your prestige. Um. And it shows what debt you have taken out against each of those. And then. When, uh, how much is left and when it will be paid off.
And then so.
And then, and then it also has, what is, um. How many dollars do you still have sitting in? Are we holding here in the bank?
Okay, so, and that's the revenue fund balance, I assume.
Correct, yeah.
From the several one versus sixteen million, five fifteen, that is the total or is that just for the windmill?
That is everything.
That's everything.
Everything, yeah.
And then that. The stuff in the blue follows that, those were the projects, correct?
Okay, so that's, uh, the wind farm project.
Okay.
And then it goes to, uh, a pink color. Uh, and that is the agribusiness industrial. Urban renewal.
So the wind farm pays off in twenty twenty-seven?
Correct. And then the, the bright pink as you can feel through. Is the, um, agribusiness industrial urban renewal.
Nothing's often twenty.
Well, there's a couple of.
Yeah, it's a couple of, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, the sewer was longer.
Yeah.
Twenty thirty-eight.
Yeah, and then, um, and the, the land and the infrastructure. Will be pa, is paid off. So. And then the green, as you go through, the green is the re-nutrients.
We're knocking down a few of them.
Yeah.
There's a windmill one's coming to an end.
I, that was one thing I.
Twenty years was a tough one on that.
Twenty, twenty years and, um, I was new and I. It wouldn't have penciled out. We wouldn't have been able to do it if we didn't spread it to twenty years. So we would not have been able to make the payments. So I get that, but it's a long time.
Okay, any, uh, other questions concerning the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three? Um. Hearing done. Uh, I would make a motion to approve, uh, the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, and twenty twenty-three, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, review and act on a letter of consent on the intended sale of thirty-five percent of the equity and debt of Prestige Foods of Iowa. Uh, LLC to Wholestone Farms to LLC.
They were, they were the, uh, company that Prestige had worked with for years and years, did the training of their first shift. And, uh, uh. They've had a long relationship. I think they go up to like forty-nine percent ownership, but they're doing thirty-five percent now. The Prestige, the name stays the same. Nothing changes there. Uh, it was an aspect of getting availability to, uh, uh, more pigs. It was this, it was the reasoning for.
Companies out of freedom.
Yeah, out of baskets, co-op. They've had a long relationship with Prestige. I make a motion to approve.
Okay. To approve the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and it was a letter of notification, correct?
Correct, yeah. Under the urban, under the, uh, development.
Development, correct. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the, uh. Letter. Of consent to sale of thirty-five percent of, uh, Prestige to. Um, Wholestone Farms to LLC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Um, I will say that they did send their certification of employment. Um, last week. Uh, it was due July thirty-first, but they did get it. To me.
Correct.
So I am comfortable. I was gonna request holding this until they sent their certification, but it is, it is here.
Okay. Okay, item number eleven, uh, Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, update on secondary roads.
Okay, update, uh, blades route covering, uh, the routes to keep up with harvest last week. Um, trying to get out as much as possible and with this rain now over the weekend, they'll be out shaping up those roads even better. Um, they are also helping with crack sand on the Gulf Blacktop. Uh, trucks, they're preparing for brush cutting. Um, we put a brush cutting project together. Um, we're gonna go township by township and put the whole crew in each township. It seems like we've had a good year for, uh, brush to grow, so we need to get township by township and take care of it. Um, so that will be the focus on that. Um.
Would, would we do that? Are we treating with port on?
Yes, we're treating with the product. I was asked, uh, to, to see what the product looks like.
Thank you.
Um. They also helped with Bridge one thirty-seven because some of the staff was, um, uh, Jake was gone last week to, uh, Bridge or the superintendent's conference, superintendent and assistance conference. Um, they also helped with crack sand and trucks did. Uh, work orders are completed, uh, thirty-eight of them. We closed out thirty permits for entrances. Uh, last week, so going out and, uh, seeing the ones that haven't called back all the way to, I think, twenty twenty. We've had people not call in and say, hey, got them done. And so, um. So we're putting a little different focus on it. Uh, construction Bridge fifty-three on the Gulf Blacktop is open to traffic, was open on, um, Friday. It was painted on Friday. We did a post-construction. Uh, meeting with the DOT or that's actually happening today. Um, or tomorrow, excuse me, tomorrow. And, um, we did a post-construction. Uh, pre-opening with the, uh, contractor last week. So I have them fixing up a few things to allow for more erosion control and, uh, also, uh, on top of the culvert next to the road, trying to get some, um, grass to grow.
And I think I asked this last week, but I don't remember if I did or I just thought that I was gonna ask it. But will there be garb rel on that west side? No, not required.
No, not required. We're outside and cleared, so.
Alright.
Uh, Bridge one thirty-seven, they started backfilling, uh, the culvert on Friday, so they'll still keep working on that. Um. My reports are on top, they're face down, okay? Uh, and so that's what I have for that. That should be, uh, um. Backfill this week. And then probably start the next one. So, yeah, so one ninetieth will be, um, all. All open.
Excellent.
From Madison to Kecar. Or, yeah, no, not Kecar, excuse me, Hancock. Yeah, almost black tie, so. Next item is the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Karen? Um, so I have a resolution here, uh, number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven. Uh, I've attached the bid item, uh, or bid tab to the, uh, resolution. As you can see, it's confidential, destroy if not awarded. Um, we did have the Woolstock Bridge, uh, on C seventy let last week on Tuesday. Um, had four responsive bidders. Uh, I feel that the bid is right where it needs to be. We had a estimated, uh. Um, programmed amount of one point five.
Yes.
So it is under what we have, which is good. So of that. That dollar amount, we did receive a grant from the CDBR Fund through the DOT for a million dollars. So the rest of it was already taken care of and we already planned for it by our BR fund. And that's our, and then we're also doing the inspections on it, so.
Good savings then.
Great savings. Yes. So.
So, again, this is the bridge across, uh, Eagle Creek, the one that's closest to Woolstock. This is not the one across the Moon River.
No.
This is the one.
That's the other one we got a grant for from the feds.
Yeah.
So that one. Uh, I do have one correction on free winter work. Um, there's actually the, so what they do on the proposal is they say. Winter work and then, so they say, oh, you can work from November one to April first and it's free. Then they canceled it on the next line item on the next page. So it's no free winter work. So if they do come in during the winter, we will charge them days.
Oh.
Okay, so, so the way they do it on the proposal is it shows. Winter work, you can work between November first and April, April first, but then it also says in that same line, no, this working days will not be charged. And then they cancel it on the next line down where it says no free winter work is available. So when they do come in during, between November one.
Clock starts.
Clock starts, they're charged working days.
Okay.
Okay? So if they don't come in and they can't work because it's negative fifteen, we don't charge a day, but if they do come in, we charge.
Okay.
How many working days?
One hundred and ten.
And you said November first? So, I mean, I could tell somebody that they definitely will not close it before November first.
Can't say that.
Oh.
No. They will, it's, they'll get charged days if they are in working from November first to April first. They can come in as soon as the contract signed and we have a pre-con, they can come in and knock it down.
But in the pre-con, that will be part of the discussion.
I'm going to request a schedule for that, from them.
Okay.
A Gantt chart that says, hey, we are doing this here, this here, this here, obviously depending weather, but that's our schedule.
Okay, new cooperative is definitely interested in. Uh, if we have a date. That we can say, this isn't gonna start before this day, they would like to know.
So what I can do with that is I can make sure I have the correct contact. I'll work with you.
Okay.
In our road notification tool. So we have a road notification to a service girl and we'll put that out and it goes to schools, it goes to.
Okay.
The newspapers, it can go to the co-ops. We have contacts in there. I just want to verify that we have the correct contact.
Okay, yep.
So.
Did the one million from the Woolstock be?
City BR fund. From the Iowa DOT. Yep.
You talked very fast.
Sorry.
So. If this is accepted, it's not confidential, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, so if you approve the resolution, um, then it's. Public knowledge.
Gotcha.
Like I said, if, if there is any. Idea of. Not approving it, we would have to reject all bids. That's what makes it confidential. So nobody else would see.
Uh, then they know what the bids are before.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and you work with the. You work with this contractor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We understand how to work with them now.
There we go.
So they will be charged.
Working days.
Working days through the winter if they.
If they come in.
And if they go past a hundred and ten days is.
It's a thousand dollars a day.
Okay.
With liquidated damages. Now you must prove damages.
Damages. Been down that road.
Been there.
Down that road, yes. So I do wanna, uh, make a note that there is three thirty Fifth Street coming down to Woolstock. Um, that we're gonna pay attention to. There might be some extra dust control that we have to put down or maybe even reducing the speed limit on that. We've done that before in the past.
And I think that's only a half mile, right?
Correct, yeah.
And it's a paved bridge.
Yes, it's, yes.
So.
Yeah, but there is a gravel portion of that.
Yes.
So I want to make sure that will be the cut around. So I wanna make sure that will be the cut around.
And they're gonna do it.
Go right around it, so.
And has the city? Will those roads handle that or not?
They they have a co-op there, so I don't know why they wouldn't be able to handle that traffic.
Make more from your third.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty seven, awarding the contract for project VRS eight five five zero parentheses six zero one, close parentheses dash six zero dash nine nine, which is the C seventy bridge across Eagle Creek there within the city limits of Woolstock. Although or by rope although Carl.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi.
Dean.
Hi.
Motion carry.
I know, you need one, Benny.
Yeah, that's pretty great.
Sign it in, my. We're still working on the C seventy bridge, Boss Pit Bridge, getting the funding agreements put in place. So once that comes, I'll bring it back to you and I think you have to sign a funding agreement. Maybe with like Clay County or something like that, because Clay County was the the.
County of record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So. They will do that and once that's put in and then we'll know what the letting bit can be when we have that.
But we think that that's a twenty five project, right?
Yes, I wanna let it in in twenty five, late twenty four or early twenty five.
Okay.
And for completion in twenty five. Also.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want, sorry, let's let's say just on the record that Goderson Smith Construction Company was the lowest responsive bidder and the bid item for the bid was one one million, two hundred fifty two thousand, eight hundred eighty eight dollars and fifteen cents.
Thank you.
I got a brush cutting for you to get to.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we wanna skip down to new business before item twelve?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah. Okay.
I got an update on the agribusiness part. I talked with Christiansen's. And they had a they spread fertilizer out there which Goldilu did a map quest on and what the kilo acres are that they're doing, because they were basically, it was like sixty five acres. Well, what it comes up to is fifty three point ninety six. Because there's a where the lagoon portion is, there's a there's a scrap pile of dirt back there and then also our edge of the roads all around there and our well area. So it comes up to fifty three point ninety six. I.
Yeah, almost fifty four, fifty three nine six.
So. And basically I told him I we just rounded off fifty four acres and they're willing to pay the two thirty two an acre.
That was based on that.
That's the the rental agreement will be written up so that the cash rent for those three years is based on the ISU cash rental survey. Have you got that copy, Benny?
You have it.
I have it.
Sure. Oh. No.
I'm thinking it's in that drawer there.
You put it there? Okay, I did. You're good.
It'll be based on the Iowa State University Cash Rental Rate Survey summary for crop reporting districts and it will, we will use the average of the alfalfa hay in the North Central District, which is District Two, which for for twenty three excuse me, for twenty four crop would be two hundred and thirty two dollars.
And now they're willing to pay that, but also I do wanna bring to them because I forgot to on it could change from year to year for the next three years.
And these are available online. All the past ones are there, so you can look back and see how it has changed.
And then they wanna do payments of March half and March first and half October first.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna get a little over twelve thousand dollars a year, so six thousand dollars each.
Good.
And I will bring that up to them about that, make sure they're all right with the fluctuation
Yep.
through the next three years. I'm sure it won't be that much. And then we get our contract written up with the attorney.
Okay.
So they could sign and.
I will print off the last three years so that they can see what it's done in the last three years.
Is this called the lease agreement or a maintenance agreement?
I would call it the lease, yeah, lease agreement.
Okay.
And they'll do the same as far as mowing the ditch along seventeen, taking care of the fence lines.
Okay. Very good. So again, just for the public, this was a lease that they that we signed for three years. They established alfalfa there. Typically alfalfa crop is good for six years, at least six to seven. And so that is why we are offering this back to the tenant that established it. And I guess the rest is self-explanatory.
They originally paid for the alfalfa to go in there.
Correct.
Correct. I make a motion.
Sorry.
I was just gonna add that I had talked to Eric to ensure that that we could do that without putting it out for a public bid and he assured me that that we can do that. That the lease term could be no longer than three years. If it's longer than three years, then you have to go out for a public bid. So I have a motion in a second to approve the agribusiness ag lease utilizing the Iowa State University Cash Rental Rate Survey for alfalfa hay that is established in the North Central District, which is depth level two. I think I got all that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Well, that, Benny.
As a recording.
Item number, back up to item number twelve, consider going into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty one point five one dash J to discuss the purchase or sale of a particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase, the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for the property. And Adam, I'm assuming that we are, we need to go, okay. Is there a motion?
Motion. Motion.
Second. I have a motion, the second, to go into closed session in accordance with Iowa Code Chapter twenty one point five, one Julia to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, yeah.
Have a good day.
Yeah.
Great. Probably not the same class, but crazy. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm on the speed. Yeah.
Okay, we're back in open session. There was no action to be taken discussed in closed session. How about meetings?
I had Eldora Friday. They are, and I don't know if we had any counseling bills for fifty dollars. Because we are gonna be refunding that back to counties. Oh, we haven't had much of anything there this year, which is good, but I know some counties have. New buildings going good. That's pretty much it. And then I got El or Udmol tomorrow. We're gonna go look at the Roosevelt Building up in Emmisburg that they refurbished. Then we'll have a meeting up there at that time, so I'm probably gonna leave town probably two three o'clock, so like we're clear the building. And. That's pretty much it.
I'd landfill, things are moving up there. They got the fence around the perimeter now. We're, you know, required them to put a fence up. But there's no requirement on height. So they put a four foot fence up versus an eight, saving a lot of money. And so, which I was shocked that there's no height requirement.
Yeah, so much. Because you wanna restrict that, so the four foot doesn't really restrict that.
Exactly. I guess it was for vehicles is what they're concerned. So with that, they've got a fence out there.
And is that around the old landfill also?
Yes, yeah, goes around the whole, and then cuts it where we, you know. So, but things are plugging there. They're receiving a lot of clay from a project here in Clarion that the company that is digging the clay out is taking it out there because they do not want, they don't know if it's contaminated, not contaminated, they can't resell it, so is going out to the landfill.
The water project.
Uh, no, I think it is so another another company here, Clarion, there.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and what we're doing out there is we're cutting the clay. If there's any like petroleum and that burns out, so we will be then able to sell the clay. So, so that was a good one to call there. Economic development, you wanna hit on economic development?
In what regard?
Our meeting.
I have a very successful condition meeting. They stated, we are sending the notice, the new promissory notes out. Belmont is back. Clarion was approved, Eagle was approved. Clarion will meet on the eleventh of October.
They're thankful for that. Eagle Grove was, they got people interested in it.
Yes, yep.
I've got, last week I did meet with Courtney and I met with Summit Carbon Solutions, Turnkey Solutions and who's the other person? I guess just those two, and maybe they're both representatives of Turnkey Solutions. One of them was the the young fellow that you met with.
That's great.
Yeah.
He is solid.
Yeah, Summit Carbon and the other guy, I think, was Turnkey. And just discuss, they're looking now at waiting until the permits are all done and approved with any conditional permits. And then starting their they'll do their tile investigations or tile disclosure.
Exploration.
Yeah, location. They'll do their locating, just not just prior to construction, but closer to construction, rather than I was encouraging them to do the permits and start doing the locates on lands that they have already got signed easements on as soon as the crops were out. But they feel that there's less impact to the landowner if it's a one time, you know, they come in and they locate and then the construction is coming after that, so.
And none of that construction will start until the utility board votes.
That's correct, yeah. There will be one company that does Wright County, so there'll be, although there's, it comes in from three areas, there'll be one company, I've got the name of the company, I just don't remember it off the top of my head, that will be do doing the construction through Wright County.
Oh, good, so one one company to deal with versus several now.
Correct.
Do you envision maybe bi-weekly construction meetings as they go through, maybe as a joint drainage district, secondary roads?
Yeah, I think that that will probably be very.
That'd be a great idea, because it keeps everybody on on page.
Yeah, and included in that would be the drainage engineer and also Christina Paradise, our inspector.
Okay, that way we could maybe do that. Know a schedule and then also be able to provide that to public.
Yeah.
You know, hey, this is where they're working for. Here's their Gantt chart, you know.
And maybe solve problems before we create them too.
Uh. And then this week I have minus on Wednesday and CFR on Thursday.
I have DCAT also.
And we also have the comprehensive plan, public input meeting is tomorrow evening, tomorrow afternoon at three thirty here.
And then six thirty at Memorial.
Six thirty in Eagle Grove. Or that's for public input on the comprehensive plan. Remember that hadn't been updated for, I think, twelve years and we are in the process of doing that, so. I'm going to attempt to be at one of those.
That's tomorrow at six thirty Eagle.
Right.
Yeah, and three thirty in Clarion.
Here in this this room.
Yes. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I've asked the order placed on next week's agenda of the matching fund requirement for the heart of Iowa.
Oh, yes, Carl, any progress on soliciting donations for?
Not at this time. I will work on it more this week.
Okay.
The total total match, including administrative costs, is fourteen thousand, three oh three. The only commitment that I received back was from First Citizen Bank.
Just nothing from First State or?
Pleasure sent to First State, First Bank, Greenbelt, First State Bank, Belmont, First Bank, and now Eagle Grove, First State Bank, Eagle Grove.
Okay.
You think Purpleson or any of those would be interested in something like that, where they're doing so much construction and remodeling? That they would donate to a program like that?
Or Prestige?
Prestige, receive the laterals.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, Beecher Bush is, you got the business deal. Please. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Yeah, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, we are adjourned.